So it's 6:01 on Wednesday, August 9th, 2023. I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Select Board. It's a joint meeting with the Ad Hoc Bylaw Committee. I don't think-
Hold on. Lynn, is that- Lynn Turcot, is that you? Whoever Lynn is, please de-mute.
Yeah, yes, it's me.
Ah-ha, we have a quorum tonight.
We are meeting in the basement of the Rutland Public Library. We are on Zoom, and this is being recorded. We're being televised on local access, and it's being recorded for re-airing on local access as well as YouTube.
So I will open the August 9th, 2023 meeting of the Rutland Ad Hoc Bylaw Committee. Ditto on all that remote access and stuff.
Can we just start with the pledge?
I pledge to comply of the United States of America. Under the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, kind of as I mentioned at our meeting on Monday night, I'm hoping that we can maybe speed things up a little bit. I know that these next few- we have to finish uptown administrator, and then I think we get into some of the- when we get to the financial piece also, I think it's gonna be pretty heavy. We can spend as much time as needed. I don't wanna rush through things, but if we can try to speed things up a little bit, I would appreciate that. I'd like to try to keep it to two hours again tonight, so in clockish. And then I know that we had- I had asked on Monday if we could kind of look at our calendars to see how far we get tonight and what makes sense going forward. I think I would love to be able to fit some of these in our regular scheduled meetings. And also, I think we're going to need to have at least one or two more kind of working sessions, depending on how things go tonight. Okay?
Okay.
I think we finished the first page.
Well, before we do that, we have something else to talk about, 'cause there's always things happening in this town. Last night, I met with the Planning Board and presented the first draft of a zoning bylaw to allow an associate member of the Planning Board. Okay, so hey, notice number one. There are going to be zoning bylaw amendment proposals at November's meeting. And in fact, I know of probably three. I think that there's the one I just mentioned. There's one for changes to kennel licenses, and I'll talk about that when the time is right. And there's an- there will probably be a third administrative fix-ups, 'cause there's still some things wrong in the current zoning bylaw, references to sections that don't exist. So, that's to let you know. But the real reason I'm bringing it up tonight is the Planning Board is asking for your input. Let me set the stage. Mass General Law says that when a vacancy occurs on the Planning Board, that the process to get to appoint a member until the next election requires a joint vote of the Select Board and the Planning Board. So the two groups together appoint the replacement member of the Planning Board. Given that as a model, I wrote up that appointment of the associate member would go through the same basic process. So it's a joint meeting or a joint vote of both bodies.
Under their own umbrella? In other words, each committee separately voting on this person?
This is ju- no, no, it's a joint meeting. So that would be a- there would- if it's a missing- assuming one member is missing, it's the five members of the Select Board and four members of the Planning Board. Nine members get together and vote together, and that's a- the total majority carries the vote. There is not only an appointment section, there is a removal section. So the Planning Board's question to you folks is, are you interested in being involved in that appointment and removal, those two processes, or not? If you're interested, then make sure it's written that way. And if you're not interested, make sure that it's written that way.
That's the Planning Board?
Yes.
Specific to the Planning Board?
Right.
But that's particularly only regarding-
Only the associate member.
Associate member and removing.
Right.
So not appointing.
Because the other ones are elected.
Yeah, yeah. But for the appointment, it's definitely Planning Board and Select Board.
This is by Mass General Law?
Okay. Well, no, the Mass General Law of associate members only says the bylaw specifies if the person- if and how the person is appointed or elected, but in this case, is appointed.
So the question is whether you're interested in being involved in removing an associate member?
What was the Board's take on it?
It wasn't a strong preference either way. It was, let's find out if the Select Board's even interested in being involved before we write it either way.
I guess the question I have is, what's the selection process you use for an associate member? And would that be something the Select Board should look at? I don't know.
The usual selection process, even for replacement members, is that the Planning Board puts forth a proposed person, proposes a nominee, basically, that the joint body votes upon.
And if I understand correctly, the appointment side is definitely a joint Planning Board and Select Board. The appointment of that associate member, which is essentially to a fill-in member, if I understand correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong, Norm and Peter. If either you don't have a quorum because of absenteeism or you don't have quorum for- because of recusals, because of issues that need to be voted on?
If I may, it's not just quorum. They are specifically, by Mass General Law, for voting on special permit applications. Special permit votes require a supermajority. And it's very easy to not get a supermajority of a five-member board.
Especially in a town, a smaller town like this, where a lot of people have- feel that they need to recuse themselves for-
For a variety of reasons. Or are out sick. Or there's actually a vacancy on the board. There are many reasons to have an associate member, and I think- and by the way, I'll also mention that one of the points Tim brought out very well last night was that this is a really good training ground for future Planning Board members. It virtually creates a succession plan.
So I guess the question a little bit is, Select Board by MGL is involved with Planning Board in the appointment process. So does Select Board feel that we should be- that Select Board should be involved in the removal of an appointed associate? It's all- we're not talking about elected officials. We're not talking about any- it's that appoint- those appointed person or persons.
I guess I have mixed feelings. Number one is, if you are trying to get rid of somebody, and there are four people that are doing it, that adds a lot of pressure. So it would be nice to have a partner, if you will, in the process that can objectively look at it as well. The other side is, if the four members of the Planning Board are all in agreement and feel that this person isn't working out, then why should we step in and do that?
Another side is that this is the kind of thing that, you know, could build over a period of time.
Right.
And the Select Board would somehow or other have to make sure that they become totally aware of the timelines of what happened when, da-da-da-da, all this kind of stuff. You know, unless you all wanna come to our Planning Board meeting.
Well, but also-
As long as they're Zoom, I'll try.
Also, to be a little more complete, also, the process of removal is written charges and a public hearing by the Planning Board. And then, only after that would there be, if necessary, a vote of the joint board, joint body.
Being frank, I mean, I think probably we should be a part of it. But I- if this person is anyway cognizant of what's going on, he won't wait to be discharged. He'll step down.
I think you're an optimist. But in some cases, it depends upon the person. I don't want to.
You know, without going through the public discourse on it. But if it does, then I think the Select Board should be a part of the process.
Yeah, and I think if they're involved with appointing that person... So I could kind of go either way, but I do feel like I'm leaning more towards they should also be involved in the removal process.
There's a certain symmetry to it, absolutely.
Yeah, just for some consistency, so that you've got the same set of boards looking at who gets in and who's making the decisions to remove. It's not just one or the other.
And it does, in fact, align very nicely with the other bylaws you folks have already looked at about the appointing authority being the joint body. The removal authority would be the joint body. Now, I don't think that has to apply for lots of reasons I can list, but it's not important.
Okay, backing up a bit. You mentioned progression from associate to a board member.
Yes, that per- he'd have to be elected, but-
Is that part of the election process?
The- well, in order to become a full member, one needs to be elected. That's not a question. It makes, I think, a more obvious selection choice if a vacancy occurs during a year that you have someone that you know is familiar with all the- with as many processes as that person's been exposed to as an associate member. It all depends upon how many meetings there are. There are lots of things- there are lots of details I'm not talking about tonight. But it does- that's what we're calling about, the succession plan. If there's a vacancy, an associate member, it makes sense to be appointed to a full membership. And then he would have to either-
Be elected.
Elect, be elected, or appointed afterwards if somebody else doesn't already fit the seat. Another note is there- by Mass General Law, because this is a five-member Planning Board, there could be one and only one associate member. Yes.
Public hearing?
Yes.
That'd be a joint public hearing, then?
I don't know, you tell me what to write. Where I-
Did I believe the Board discussed that last night and decided to have the public hearing just held by the Planning Board? Because there were two different sets of regulations in MGL. That's how that had to happen.
Right, 'cause if we say a public hearing by the Planning Board, that- everything about that is defined in Mass General Law. However, the Select Board does not have a single set of Mass General Law defining public hearing process. And I probably just have to write some words about using the processes defined in whatever section define the Master and- define the Planning Board rules.
I mean, I guess I'm looking at it from a little bit of continuity sake based on what we already have and will see in the bylaw recommendation, current or changes. And that's appointing authority. It's the joint on both sides. And so I guess because of that, I'm leaning towards keeping it as a joint. But I- because it's an appointed piece, but that Select Board would be involved with. So that's, I guess, where I'm coming from. But similar, I don't- it's- I don't feel very strongly about it. But I think one thing that we found kind of going through stuff is continuity sake. If- and I think especially anytime that there's removal, it's going- it's likely to be emotional. And so having that sense of continuity, and I think sometimes different perspectives, because the Board that's most affected might have been in the weeds so much that an outside board, whether that's Select Board or someone else, might be able to see a bigger picture.
And this position only steps in when there isn't somebody else on a special permit in case. They don't sit in on anything else, correct?
Yeah, by law, they are only allowed to vote on special permits.
So if somebody wasn't there and you weren't discussing a special permit, this person could not step in as an associate for the Board?
No.
Correct.
But they can be heard at meetings on things other than a special permit.
Right, in fact, one provision is that the associate member may have voice but no vote on all other Planning Board matters. It gives them impetus, reason, to be at every Planning Board meeting.
And did you say it's until the next election, meaning the next election for that?
The fill-in, that's- so that's only when you're- when a regular seat on the Planning Board becomes vacant that you can do an appointment of a replacement full Planning Board member up until the next election?
So if there was somebody that resigned two years into the five-year term?
Yep, Norm resigns next week.
Right.
You wanna fill that- you don't wanna leave it empty.
No, you're not, Norm.
This is- hey, I figure I'd pick on somebody who's not me for a change.
But is that until November election?
No, 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 the town election. The municipal election, which is in May.
Oh, okay, but not for that, the full remaining three years of that term?
Correct, nope, nope. Cannot appoint to that. You can only appoint until the next election.
So that's similar to our school committee appointments. If we have a school committee, so- which is different than Select Board. If we have a resignation on Select Board, the only way we can fill it is by having an election, whether it's special, you know, we call a special election or sit as a four-member board or whatever until the May election. But school committee, and then for this, we could- a person could be appointed to fill out-
Board of Health, same thing. It's, in fact, the same basic process. Remaining Board of Health members propose a replacement member, and then a joint vote meets- a joint vote appoints. That's a different section of MGL, but it's the same notion. Planning Board has their own.
So it sounds like, from the Board, just if I can try to wrap it up, the Select Board sounds like we are not strong one way or the other, but feel that there is value to having involvement in the removal process to match- to stay consistent with existing bylaws as well as being involved in appointing and then also aware and involved in the removal.
Sure.
I'd say it's aptly said.
Yeah. All right, so I'll bring that. I'll make some changes.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
No.
Okay.
I think it's still in the draft phase.
Exactly right.
And so I think Planning Board just wanted to get a sense for-
Right, it was just a sense of the Board. It was not a request for a vote. Votes will happen when you vote to place the Warren article.
There was no strong feeling one way or another.
Yeah. I was in and out of that part of the discussion last night, so I heard some of it, but not all of it. So is that what you-
Okay, I do wanna go back just a little bit to clean up some of the changes that you folks requested. Oh, darn it, there's that. I need... There you are, general provisions. Definition of working day now says, "and holidays recognized by the town", instead of just holidays. There was another thing that was discussed briefly that I gotta find again. That was about... Oh, that's right, the definition of employee. I- we talked about this last time. I think that issue's closed because... The definition town official, excuse me. Because this is sufficiently expansive that it makes it clear to anyone who reads it, even though employee has different meanings and different contexts. I don't think we need to clear that. I don't think we need to specify it, 'cause we'll add words and that will do nothing but add confusion.
And again, just to reiterate, I was the one that brought that up. My question wasn't about town official. It was about town employee.
Right, so whether the town employee is someone who draws salary from the town or a statutory employee for the purposes of conflict of interest law, I don't care. The fact that we mentioned member of a committee, again, makes it, I think, makes it clear who a town official is.
And I guess my question is not- I'm very clear on what makes a town official. My question is what constitutes a town employee? Because we have paid individuals and for, in the case of ethics and open meeting law and all of that, it's Boards and Commission members also are designated as town employees.
Right, I understand that. And we covered both, so that it doesn't matter whether or not someone reading this knows that that person is a statutory employee. It doesn't matter, because an employee of any- any town employee or any member of a committee, there isn't conflict it, in fact, reinforces.
Okay, I- we can get through, but I think- because my questions are still, in some of the bylaws, it calls out no town employee can serve on such and such.
We'll get to the others when we get to them.
And so that's my question, is what constitutes a town employee? Like I said, I'm very clear on the town official side of things.
So that'll be a question for the future. So that should mark off that first one, Tamika, in my opinion. Uh, moving on to, yes, and as you can see, I'm using- I haven't done a publication, so these- any- none of these changes are up on the website yet. Ah, yes, appointed committees.
Can I just go back a second?
Okay.
On general provisions?
Yes.
There was one there I had a question on, that was D, under number five.
Yes, I can get it here.
And there was $100 there. I wasn't sure.
That was still a question, an open question that the Board needs to resolve.
Okay, and I'm okay with the $100, 'cause I went through the list of fines, and it has to do with one that isn't there. We charged $100.
That is correct.
Okay, I'm okay with that. $100, stay the way it is.
Okay. So we don't need- great, resolved.
And the rest of the Board was okay with $100, I think. I think it was Harry that had the question about it, and we were willing to have the conversation. But if you're okay with $100 for anything that's not defined in the schedule-
I mean, the only thing that isn't defined here is, and I don't even know if that would apply with something to do with the new marijuana that we have coming in. But I don't know if that's a police issue.
Well, it's also an MGL issue.
Okay.
And-
But we can resolve that in the fines section.
Yes, I agree. That's the right time for that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Harry.
So, appointed committees. Oh, wait a second, I didn't click, apparently. Appointed committees, come on. There we go. We added a new section D in the removal process. The committee chair shall be timely notified of the decision of the appointing authority. So yes, now, and one presumes that the committee chair would distribute that information. Okay, on to... There's town meetings. One change is in this section C1. It's not just a majority. It's now a 2/3rds majority of the joint body composed of the members of the Select Board, Finance Committee, and Town Moderator. So for fully seated committees, 5 plus 7 is 12, plus 1 is 13. 13 divided by 3 is 4 and change. Twice is 4 and change, so it's nine members. Sorry, twice 4 and change is 8 and change. And I reworded for C, "town meeting may be located outside the limits of the town only by affirmative vote of the body composed of the Town Moderator and Select Board." I'm not gonna bring it up. I did remove the town, the tree warden section from the Select Board bylaw, and we'll have a lot to talk about in the- when we get to Board of Public Works. So anything else on the old stuff? So we were done. You are correct. I believe we finished this section. And D1 of Chief Human Resources Officer, there are more subsections, but I just wanna make sure there are no questions before we move on. Ah, ah, yes. This one is very different. Well, very different, is differently from the last time you read it. "Based on Town Council's advice, Town Administrator by and through the Select Board", very important words. You'll see those a lot from here on out, "shall be the appointing authority for all department heads not appointed by some other authority by statute or as provided by the bylaws subject to ratification by the Select Board."
Seems like double wording.
Well, it is both. Well, it's by and through the Select Board, meaning at the end of the day, the Select Board has the authority to reject, but it explicitly says that you're allowed- that you have a ratification vote for a department head. I see something I want to change, and that's in the A- subsection A, "failure of the Select Board to take a ratification vote within", it says two weeks. I want- that really ought to be three, "shall constitute a ratification by said Board." So if you don't act at your next meeting, you've approved it. Now, that should be three weeks, because if there's a holiday, if Town Administrator appoints a new treasurer-collector on the date of your meeting, although you could vote at that meeting, it would not be unusual to put it off for one meeting. But if that next Monday is a holiday, you're not gonna meet in two weeks. So three weeks takes care of that. Okay. So, yeah. Questions about department heads?
Go ahead, anybody? I guess I have a question as far as how- because it's been, we haven't had stability in the Town Administrator role and how it plays out. And ratification would be essentially the Town Administrator brings forth the appointment and the Board approves, not re-interviews, not-
Correct.
Well, I guess then what does the word "by and through" the Select Board?
Honestly, I don't know exactly what those words mean, but it's what Council told me to put in, so I put them in. I do not know the details of what those words mean.
That would be something I'd like to know, just to clean that up. "By and through" and then "ratif-" that's what I'm talking about, double. Kind of like, if it's "by and through the Select Board", then we have to approve it, but then it's telling us that now we have to ratify it, so I'm not sure which one of those is-
Well, because one of those could-
I think-
One of those could be dealt with through delegation. Delegation says you give the power to appoint. And what this says is, you don't have to explicitly give the po- it is power through the Select Board, but on top of having the power to appoint, it still needs ratification. I'm sorry, I cut you off late.
No, 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 I was gonna say, I think the "by and through", and I guess this is part of the murkiness, is job description current, because this is a new bylaw. Job description would have to be looked at also to ensure. But I also, I guess I come from a perspective where I would like to see it a function of the Town Administrator to be appointing. And I'm, I guess I'm willing to give on the ratification part. I'm okay with- I'm okay with that as far as if it's more of a notification and have buy-in. But I think that over the course of years, it's been a little bit of a swing as far as who's doing what and why. And so I definitely want to see continuity and know what we're doing. And I think also from a administrator's perspective, and I don't know, Austin, if you can speak to it or not, but from any administrator's perspective, having the authority over the staff for which they are charged with managing is, to me, beneficial, hugely beneficial, rather than- beneficial, hugely beneficial, rather than, um, a board dictating who is, is being hired that they then are required to manage that maybe is not what is for the, you, you, and, and this was my comment about the politicization piece a little bit also.
So let me add two sections of color to this. One, town council made it clear that the way this was originally worded, that doesn't have by and through the select board, is more of a town moderator position, sorry, town moderator, a town manager position than a town administrator position. So, which is where we got some language, we took the language from a number of bylaws, so whichever one we took, it was clearly a much stronger town administrator in the town structure. I will also say, this, in the stronger position, in the stronger language, was one of the significant problems the town administrator had at the public information session. Is, is that the the people who objected said that's too much power for the TA. And based on town council's advice to us, I'd have to agree with that assertion.
I'm still confused, but by and through says, it's like, okay, it has to be there, so I guess there's no sense in discussing it. But when it comes to ratification, and again, TA is going to go through the process of applying, uh, sending out the notice for the job, gonna go through the application process, gonna go through the, uh, process of, um, looking into that particular person, and then they're gonna bring a person to us to be ratified. What I don't like is, and this is where I think that in this administrator town future, we are giving totally carte blanche to somebody, to pick somebody in this town that we are required to pay for, that the town has to absorb the pay for that person, and all we can do is say yes or no. We don't have the ability to even ask really any questions about it. All we're doing, and ratification is basically a yes or no vote. So that's what I have a problem with. So if they want to go through the whole process, that's fine, but I don't think we are, I don't think we should give away that ratification process to a town administrator. That's my thought. Let them do their job, let them get the people in, uh, let, I mean, there are some other bylaws that are gonna conflict with this, but, uh, let them do this particular thing, and it, it really, uh, only has to do with department heads in this section, right?
Yes, it's only department heads.
Right, so it's not the general employees or anything like that.
Correct.
And it really, if I'm understanding this, um, because there are other sections, I thought, that had to do with the fire chief and the police chief, where it was the sole responsibility of the select board.
That's only true for one of those, I believe it's the fire chief.
It's fire.
Fire chief is specifically by mass general law appointed by the, by the Board of Selectment.
Because they're both, because they're both strong chiefs, but the strong chief language for fire explicitly says, um,
My point is, we're only, then we're only really dealing with what, two department heads? Police and?
Police, fire.
DPW, well.
No, not DPW, that's a whole different thing.
Okay.
But police, fire, if I think of every department head, town clerk's gonna be appointed soon, that's department head. Treasure collectors, accountant, um. Building inspector, that's right, I'm also looking for Austin, what, who else am I missing? What's that?
Planner.
Planner. There are, there are a fair number of department heads in this town.
And I think, if, if I may, I think there's been recently our department heads have had contracts, and that's a more financial impact to the town. Um, I think Austin has been moving to putting department heads on the MTP wage scale as, um, as the re- the rest of the employees, the non-union employees, and so I think the, my hope is that with better job descriptions and actual HR policy for reviews and, and documentation and everything, that the process of which, if something isn't working out, is, is less burdensome to the town because there's not a contract involved. If that makes sense, like, that, that there's documentation, and I think some of that is coming with the HR director help and everything, that hopefully we can get some, some better policies in place that can then be continued on, and I don't know if that's, that can or should be called out in, in the bylaws, I don't know if that's a current just practice here, I don't know why, I don't think, I think it's been fairly recent since the department heads had gone to being contracted, um, and I don't know what the rationale was behind that versus keeping them on the MTP scale, and that helps also promote the, um, equity, um, parity, I guess. So in my head, I look at it and say, okay, town administrator is very clearly a political appointment and should be contracted in my mind for that continuity piece across boards, and also, what can we, what can we as a town do to try to help stabilize our employees and give them the confidence that they're doing, that they're empowered to do their jobs for which we're paying them to do without the political, some of the political will that sometimes they felt, I guess.
So I guess one of the, if we're looking at this, then the question I have is, the town administrator by and through the select board, does that mean that, and we discussed this earlier, that Austin says, I want to hire a, uh, what do we need at DPW now?
Foreman.
Foreman, we need to hire a foreman. Well, do we give him his marching orders for, you look for a foreman and let him do his thing? Or does he do his thing and then just comes back to us for ratification? That's by and through the select board, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah.
So. I, I tend to go with your second thought there, okay, in other words, yeah, he goes through, brings it to us for ratification, in other words, he's made a judgment, and you know, this, he has his job description, this person has, fits this job description, you know, let's say just nine out of ten issues, okay? And, you know, okay, so you have, you have something to learn along the way, which I think happens when any job is, 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 uh, filled, okay? So then, in other words, all right, so he's made a decision on that, and I think, you know, simple ratification by us on an issue like that is just.
Because we already have a job description, you're saying?
Yeah.
So he knows what to do.
And, and more than that, I also think that I would expect, I'm gonna lean over this way, that when hiring a department head, that there would be more information given to the select board than just, here's the candidate.
Oh, I would agree, and you know, this is, and I was, I was, I made an assumption there, okay, that we would get background on what this person was capable, what capabilities were and so on and so forth. How, um, Austin felt that it fit into the job description, okay? So yes, in other words, you're gonna go that way with something, I mean, you know, yeah, we've got to have a little bit more input than that, but I mean, you know, yeah, I think basically, you know, the job description and filling the job description with a viable candidate is where he should be.
Austin. What would you feel comfortable? And I know we're dealing with personalities, we're dealing with payroll, so we're looking at an individual, we don't want to throw him up in the front page of the Boston Globe. So what do you feel is comfortable letting the select board know about this individual or, or whatever?
Well, I, so put yourself in a candidate's perspective, applying for a job. They see a great new opportunity in the town of Rutland, it's a department head, they probably worked their whole career to get to something like this. You go through an interview process, they talk to peers in their community that have reviewed their resume, their credentials, interview, and then I say, congratulations for appointing you to the Council on Aging Director's position. Great, we negotiate salary, we negotiate everything else according to the wage scale, and then I say, but you have one more thing, you have a ratification, and depending on what that looks like, it may be a whole interview publicly in front of the community, who knows gonna, is going to be there. So I think from a candidate's perspective, in today's economy, they're looking for as much separation from a political body and as much, you know, they know exactly who they're reporting to and who their boss is. So, given that sort of setup, I tend to think that, um, and, and this is just my opinion, ratification candidly should be presenting the candidate's present, uh, credentials, talking about the process, and asking for, I hate to say it in, in this perspective, but lack of a better word, ceremonial ratification kind of vote. Not an interview, because they've already done that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Done an assessment center, we talked about the process. But you know, kind of like what was done with Chris, right? He was here, form, you know, notification, we've appointed, Chris Koloski gave a little bit of his background and an opportunity for him to say some words and for the board to say some words, ratify that way.
What I'm looking for is, let's say this is a month-long or two-month-long process, is that during that process, you say, I have a candidate, his skill level is great, he comes from here, he's doing this, no names, kind of like blacking it out, so that we get an understanding of who it is that you're looking at for the town. Doesn't have to be the name, doesn't have to be where he lives, doesn't even have to be that he's from Rutland or anything. I'm just trying to get a, a sense of who we are ratifying for the town that we're putting in there. Is that something that's doable?
Yes, and well, and I've done, I did something similar with, uh, with our first round of looking for a planner, I actually invited Norm to participate in, in the interviews. You know, certainly, I think with some positions, it's helpful to have community members involved, especially those that are subject matter experts, and that's why I invited the chairman of the planning board to participate in those interviews. You know, I, I do caution though, when you have members of a committee, oftentimes, sometimes they don't even realize that they're discussing these candidates in a public meeting, and that is something that I'm totally not comfortable with. Because especially that, again, it's, it's, it's blurring that separation that I think, especially in today's economy, people are looking for. They're looking for as much independence and so they can just come in, do their job, and run the department responsibly and professionally. But you know, a, a thing that's very popular now is, um, you know, screening committees that are established by, you know, the Human Resources Department and the Town Administrator, Town Manager, where it's a, you know, combination of department heads, community members, board members that kind of help with the initial screening, and then the staff then runs the, um, kind of the interview process after that as well, so.
I hate that word ratification with a passion. It's like, okay, we're the final approval, and if things go bad, we're the guys that approved it, and we knew nothing about it, so.
And, but also, on the other hand, two areas. You could lose a very good candidate by lack of ratification because, I mean, I'm not, nothing against this board, this board's been great, but future boards, for whatever reason, could vote no, and you could lose some really good people.
And I guess when I look at the previous planner, I felt in that situation as an outsider, there was politicalness involved in it. And that concerns me. Like you mentioned, trying to keep that out of it, that, that concerns me, on that, with, uh, if all we have to do is ratify it. So, I don't know how we're gonna get past this, if we're stuck here.
So I, I've seen some, so in, in the town of Winchita, and we had, the select board had the authority, so the town manager was required to provide, I forget what the word was. Essentially file with the office of the select board that we've made an appointment, but that the town, town manager made the appointment.
Like notification?
Notification, and if it, within fifteen days, the board made a negative vote, then the appointment would not be, so it's essentially, it has to be a negative rather than a positive.
You know what, maybe, maybe, I don't know how you feel, but maybe that would suffice, that it doesn't get brought up at a board meeting, that we have to ratify it, that you let us know ahead of time, so at the next board meeting, we can make a decision on it, and that gives us time maybe even to talk to you, or talk to the town administrator with any questions that we might have about the individual, without having a quote, "public" meeting. I don't know what anybody thinks about that.
I mean, I think also, I think, and I don't know if we have it in here, if there's a way to put it in, I think, I, I would feel maybe differently if all, if all, if we were looking at everything was contracted. But knowing that we're, we're moving towards job description and MTP wage scale base and everything, I, I feel that there's, um, and I, and I hate to use this word, but less risk on the town side if there's a, a significant incompatibility that cannot be addressed through performance management or something, it's easier to, to separate than with a contract that is for three years or, or whatever.
Separate, meaning parting with that individual without having to continue with the terms of the contract as far as financially?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
So that's, I think, part, part of where I'm also looking at, is, is that, moving to that shift of, and like I said, I do think that there is, personally think that there is value to having, um, the, the town administrator contracted, regardless of who that position is, because I think even across the state, MMA, I think, really pushes for town administrators to be contracted, because they very much are the ones that are at the political whim of the, of the board. And I think, over the course of the six years that, five and a half years that I've been on the board, I've seen some transitions in department heads and seen how much more difficult it is now to, to recruit, um, candidates and, and actually obtain candidate, like, we can recruit people who are interested, but then when, when it comes to negotiations, either it's the political piece, or it's a salary piece, or it's private versus public, there's a, there's a lot of factors, but trying to s- to look at how things, we can make these positions more marketable with the resources that we have. Because I think I.
I agree with you on that, I still have that little, okay, how do we know about this? And if we're notified ahead of time that at least we can, maybe it's in an email, maybe it's not in public view, so to speak, where, you know, we have to discuss it, that we get an indication of what we're looking at. And, and again, I do, I'd say it's because we answered, the, the town administrator answers to us, but we answer to the town. So we need to have a little bit of information ahead of the curve. That's what I'm thinking.
And I think some of it is, um, obviously listed, it, it's been listed on the agenda in the past, if there's appointments coming up or, or something, whether it's sports and commission appointments, or whether it's, it's whatever, um, appointments, so, so there is that notification that goes out to the, the public as a whole, that, you know, us as well as the public, we get that information at the same time that Tamika posts the agenda online. So there is a little bit of that opportunity. But I think also, in the past, there's been this push and pull also as far as wanting to know every, the, the details of every person who applied for a position and why, rather than just a general sense of why, why things did or didn't work out or what, more broadly, and a lot of people are applying and have, and aren't necessarily committed to leaving their current position, especially in today's job market, so there is a lot of, of risk to, in, in my mind, providing too much information to too many people. Because then it gets out accidentally, not on purpose, but then it can detrimentally affect any candidates that the town may actually have a vested interest in potential relationship with, as well as any other candidate's status.
I served on two search committees, okay? And we brought forth candidates who we felt were, were the, being interviewed by the select board, all right? So the, the select board sat down and interviewed these candidates and made up a decision amongst themselves as to who was gonna fill the position. Okay, so in other words, you know, at that point in time, I believe that the board was making a decision based upon what they felt this candidate. a decision based upon what they felt this candidate's qualifications were. And so, you know, it went from that point on. Um, you know, and so I see that, you know, doing things with that perspective probably seemed to be a very working uh way to do it at that particular point in time. That was five years ago, I guess anyways, was the last time around, the last time I was on the committee, so. Okay, so in other words, you know, you're looking at, okay, the committee has found this number of people to serve. And so it's up to the board to make up their decision. So, you know, basically, you're deciding on who is going to be chief or whatever board uh chairman or whatever, so you know. It's one of these things where, okay, you're looking at candidates, you're looking at qualifications. You check references and this sort of thing, and so, you know, you come down with, okay, this is the one that you're gonna have. And so, you know, talking with other towns um who have gone through the same process. Um, the time that we're going through it. Um, we kind of had a pretty good idea of, you know, what what the type of situation was that related to this job, and so we went from there. But, you know, I would say that today, you know, things would be different than they were then, but I think that's pretty normal, no matter what you're doing.
So what is the board's pleasure?
Uh, you know, I wish we could agree on something here, because, I mean, we gotta move on because our job is a lot bigger than just deciding who's gonna be appointed to a department head, much bigger than that. I don't wanna take the authority away from the town administrator, I'm already talking about that. All I keep saying is somehow, some way, before the decision is made to bring it before the board, we are kept in the loop and made known of the process of what's going on.
And Harry, that's all well and good, but that has nothing to do with by law, that's policy.
Well, it wouldn't have to do with buying through the select board?
Not clear to me.
Okay.
So this fundam-, I mean, the fundamental powers here are the authority to appoint department heads, not otherwise appointed. With ratification of the select board for department heads. Now, we can go kind of the way that Austin suggested, we can change it from explicit ratification vote to I don't know, I'd have to think about the wording, but we could change it to an anti ratification vote, if you will, within a certain amount of time. But that's, it really is, honestly, that's a ratification vote still. If you're going to vote, because one of two things is gonna happen, you're going to vote and approve yes or no, or you're not gonna vote and it is constructively approved. By not bringing it up within two weeks, three weeks at a meeting, you've decided that you're that you're fine with it.
And if if the concern is that there's gonna be someone that gets appointed to a position that something happens and they don't work out. I think what Leah's been saying helps with that, and somebody can have all the qualifications in the world and it's still, you know, great on paper.
And interview fantastically and be a total drip.
And they may not work out, so there's no guarantees on on that. So I think I think what Leah was saying is is definitely the more important piece, that if we can make those changes to ensure clarity on job descriptions, moving away from contracts where we would have less of a financial burden to the town if it doesn't work out and they process to remove somebody. That to me is the board addressing those situations as they come up to remove those people if they're not working out without financial burden to the town is more important to me than.
Yeah, I I mean, I don't, I I know you keep talking about political pressure, if you will. But what I have seen, there has been on department heads, more political pressure from boards than there has been from the town administrator. So how do we reduce that? Because if I don't like the person he hired, it's not just a question of ratification, it's a question of a board member saying I don't like anything they're doing. So if we knew a little bit ahead of time, could that eliminate that? And if that's a policy issue, then we'll do a policy issue, I guess, we'll look at it that way.
I think it's, I I almost feel like it has to be a policy or job description. Job descriptions in town administrator policy with select boards, something of that nature, because the select board changes every year. And so I think that there's always that that revolve revolving.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I also think that that because the town administrator position has been so new. It's young in town still, um, for the most e- most part. I think that that there's still that sense that the board still is is in char- in charge of department heads. Where I think, based on job description, the the town administrator is the one as the chief of staff. So if the board has issues with a with a department head, the board member or members really should have the conversation with the town administrator and say, hey, this is going on, or whatever. Obviously, if there's something a little bit more on the political side, then you might go directly to the department heads. But I think trying to keep the day to day function of town government in in the positions that that we're hiring, a lot of these positions now are professional positions, I think all of our department heads are professional level um positions, so they have that.
Okay, I don't wanna be there, of course, so.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, that's
I think what you kind of hinted a little bit at, you know, an executive session type of situation to talk it over with a town administrator, so yeah. You know, that might be a consideration, but I don't think that that would really necessarily have to be a part of the policy.
And again, I I'm not look the town administrator is relatively new, but it's been a very dysfunctional position.
Yep.
And all I wanna do is to make sure that the town administrator can effectively work with future boards without being political.
I one hundred percent agree.
And notifying the board of certain things, so it doesn't become political. It's like, I didn't want him, you know, type of thing, so even if the one person votes no and foredo, it's still ratified. So I don't wanna see that kinda, I don't wanna see that going on, I've seen it too much in the past from boards, so. And I think, I'm gonna say is, I think with Austin, we're on the right track to having a more competent town administrator who is working his self off to really do right for the town, which I haven't seen in a while, from a town administrator, so.
And I think if, I'll make a note about the, just so we can all kind of mull over this part, but I think your point is is very well taken, Harry, that that it's new and it's been dysfunctional, and I think some of the dysfunction is we don't have a bylaw, we don't have a charter. We have a a a contract and job description that probably should be the job description should be revisited, so I think that this is the first, and that's part of the reason I'd like to see this through um, the bylaws in general through, is so that we can get to a point that we have more function. Is it going to be absolutely perfect, this first pass through? Maybe not, but it's gonna be a lot better than what we currently have, and that's gonna give any, this board, any future board, as well as town administrator's office, the the tools to have a better understanding, so.
Okay, a- again, I come back to, I'm fine, let's move on. For me, uh, buy in through the select board, because if you look at the other sections going down, there are some that don't have ratification. So I come back to, what does it mean through the select board?
That fundamentally, as I understand it anyway, fundamentally by bylaw, you are delegating the authority to appoint department heads in this case to the town administrator.
Okay.
And if there wasn't a town administrator, it would fall back to select board, I think.
Yes, that's also correct.
Okay.
D three, town administrator buying through the select board shall be the appointing authority for other officers, subordinates and employees of the town except employees of of elected officials and those who by statute or by law or appointed by any other authority. You're right, there is no ratification for this, yep. Because do you really, really, really want to ratify the clerk of the conservation commission, really?
What?
No, 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 the point isn't that we're gonna replace you in the next couple of weeks, but the the question is does it make sense the select board be involved in that appointment? That's really the question. Yes, I'm picking on you, Tamika.
I mean, from a from a practical perspective, Austin's gonna look for people such as for the uh um, for the different departments. And the department heads know better than anybody who they might like, so they're gonna go, so doesn't matter to us if we are ratifying it or not in this situation, that's that's not an issue for me.
Okay, moving on. This is one of those special cases, because there's MGL that says you have to say who appoints. So the town administrator buying through the select board shall annually appoint an inspector of gas piping and gas appliances in accordance with that section of master and rule.
So it basically, so we're if I'm not mistaken, the MGLs basically says that we are the appointing authority for the inspector of gas piping and gas supply.
It does not say that. It does not say the select board is. If it had said the select board or the board of selectmen was, it would have been in the board of selectmen by law. It just says that you by, that the town by bylaw shall appoint.
Okay, okay.
So it is still buying through the select board, yes, but
By proxy, so.
Effectively.
Yeah, okay.
And provide the town administrator shall have the authority to suspend or remove for cause any employee the administrator has the power to appoint, provided proper procedures are followed with regard to contracts, town policies, town bylaws and the general laws.
Is the gas piping and gas appliance a paid position?
I'd know it probably, but I don't know.
Our gas inspector is a part of the
What's that?
The gas inspector is part of the building department's budget.
Yeah.
As well as the electrical inspector.
I think they're stipend, they're stipend positions, or are they, they're salaried?
Annual salary positions, yeah, for um, gas, plumbing and electric.
Thank you, I couldn't remember.
And aren't they funded by the inspection fees?
Nope, they're funded in the general budget.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and they're paid on the wage matrix.
Okay.
Um, the health inspector, it's um, paid by the board of health from the fees, yep.
So I have a question about this one.
Hmm.
Um, the authority to suspend or remove for cause any employee the administrator has the power to appoint, so that's then in number one A, part three, sorry, D one A, part two. Administering employee discipline and removal processes, so you're I guess if there's a whole lot of employees or department heads that the administrator is not does not have the power to appoint, then the removal of those individuals fall to the select board. So it just seems a little, I I
So D one A two says that the town administrator administers the removal processes, even the ones he doesn't, he isn't directly responsible for. He's responsible for ensuring the processes are so, that removal processes are properly followed throughout the town. That's what D one A two says.
Okay, and then D five is?
Right, D five is basically, if he can appoint them, he can remove, he he can remove them, he still has to follow the processes, so he's both the removal boss, if you will, and he's responsible for ensuring that the processes are all followed.
And there's no ratification process needed for the department heads in two, that he would have the?
That's an interesting question, and I would think the answer would would, as a practical matter be this is a day to day operation of the town, and if it's necessary to remove the department head, do you really want to want to have to put it off for two weeks for a vote of the select board?
Because it's for cause.
Right.
Right, that would have to be documented.
Right.
Yep.
Number six, the town administrator may cause to be examined without notice the job related affairs or conduct of any town department, officer, committee or employee, regardless of the manner of selection of that department, officer or employee. That is to say, he gets to investigate everybody in the town. He has the power to do that, which likely would be related to a potential suspension or removal process, but he's got, in order to properly follow all the processes, he needs to be able to not, to examine the affairs and conduct.
Is there anything that needs to be added? Unless I'm, I don't, unless I'm, this is what it already says, the the for cause, like, there has to be cause to start that process?
No, there doesn't, because this is the generation of cause. The investigation is the, is one element of showing cause for suspension or removal.
But what's
So there could be nothing more than a suspicion to cause an investigation.
So I guess that's what I'm asking, is there has to be a reason to to start this process, it can't just be
I would, I would not expect a town administrator to ar- to to arbitrarily begin an investigation of any employee.
We wouldn't expect it, but is that something that needs to be clarified in this?
Yeah, see, I'm looking at this now.
But the problem is, if it's, even if it's willy nilly, it starts with a reason. It's not performing an investigation without a suspicion or an accusation is going to lead to legal problems for that town.
And some of it may just, I, could potentially be a conversation with individuals or
It it ab- it, I would hope it would start there, and that, but but again, this is a, this is a murky area of MGL and human resources law. But at the end of the day, the TA needs to have that authority to investigate.
Harry, you were gonna say something, and then I wanted to just ask Austin if he Austin, do you have any input on this from either how Acton or Wachindon or any other communities handle kind of this, I I understand the intent of it and and I don't disagree with the intent of it, I just wanna make sure that it's not I think to Jen's point, a little bit of loop, creating a loophole that if there was a personal vendetta or something.
I'm sorry, I didn't wanna say, because I I don't expect it of you, but just in the event that's a town administrator comes in and says, I, you know, it's somebody that works, that lives in town. I don't like that person, I have a personal thing with them, so I'm gonna start looking at them and make up not make up, but do what I can to drum up whatever to remove them from their position.
Or even if there's a lot of political pressure from board members to the town administrator to to do something, I don't know, so I guess
You'd have to have, I mean, so, but Peter makes a great point about the potential for litigation.
Yeah, right.
Just in this example alone. Um, I'm gonna say this is like a future, future town administrator that
Yeah.
decides to do something like this.
They they wouldn't have a leg to stand on.
Right, and they would need to have a lot of uh documentation and such to be able to
Okay.
Yeah, because especially now with being, well, especially just being in the public eye eye alone.
Yeah.
The opportunity for litigation is
Right.
Something, the only thing, so the one thing I would add is just oftentimes now, and it doesn't, you know, examine um, without notice, doesn't necessarily have to meet, be negative, it could just be overall a performance audit. Um, examining overall the affairs and how examining overall the affairs and how departments are operating.
Looking for efficiencies?
Yeah. So, you know, so that's an opportunity to have a conversation with a department and analyze their operations, um, and see if there's any opportunities to realize efficiencies there too.
Yeah, that, I think that was gonna be my other comment, is it kind of ties into your part one responsibilities of investigating harassment, discrimination, any sort of discipline or anything like that, just goes along with being able to.
Yeah, I'll go with that. Yeah, Harry.
No, my only thought was, I've been on this earth a few years, and I've seen a lot of things happen. And one thing I know is that employees feel a little bit indebted to the person who's hiring them. Because I had my job because of you. And given the TA, the ability to do these things when, how do I say it? There's a, I won't say a personal relationship.
A loyalty thing, kind of.
There's a loyalty relationship there. And what we're seeing here is that all falls to the TA with no backup in any way, other than we can look at it, it has to be for cause, and you wanna do anything bad, but I've also, through the many years, have seen certain members of a select board put pressure on a TA regarding an individual. So.
But this would.
That's a sticky point right there, so.
But this would give the TA the ability to, call it, investigate that claim, but it still would be within your purview to decide whether or not there's any merit to it.
To go further, I, I would, that's exactly right, I imagine that the point of this investigation is determine whether any action is required.
Right.
And to initiate that action, or to say, there's nothing here and move on.
Right.
And additionally, just, I, I think.
I agree with, I agree with.
Going further and implementing human resources policies and procedures as well, well.
Which we're getting to, right?
Absolutely, yeah, it's filling out, you know, a lot, so, so, for example, conducting an investigation, and let's say there is cause for suspension, demotion, whatever, that spelled out either through a collective bargaining agreement or the human resources policies for all employees as well.
Yeah.
So, filling in those gaps there too.
And I don't know if it would come here, but also, I think, hopefully, empowering the TA, and this might be more of a policy thing also, empowering the TA, if the investigation is kind of more, bigger, broader, more specialized or whatever, empowering them to work with an, an outside firm or, or whatever.
And that's what those words, cause to be examined, means. It means that it can be the TA, or the TA can collect information from other, from other people through other bodies, whatever, what needs to be done to do an investigation.
Yeah.
And, and just to be clear, Peter, you mentioned at the beginning of this, a couple of weeks ago, that all of these authorities can be delegated, so for example, some of this with the new human resources position, some of the investigation may be delegated to that individual.
Absolutely.
Good.
So, believe it or not, we have hit the end of human resources.
Harry, do you still?
Okay, there are certain things that are not gonna be cleared up, it's just too convoluted, it's too complicated.
Right.
And, and no matter how you, whether we wanna make it not political or not.
There's a level of it.
We're not gonna get there, so. I'm okay with this.
Moving on to the chief financial officer of the town, town administrator shall create the town's balanced annual operating budget and participate in creation of the capital budget. Town administrator shall consult with the finance and capital improvement planning committees when creating or amending budgets. And the town administrator shall recommend compensation for all town officers and employees in accordance with applicable policies, contracts, or collective bargaining agreements. That's all really part of making the, the two town budgets. At the end of the day, that position is responsible for making everything balanced.
On B.
Yes.
Town administrator make recommendations to?
Up to the select board.
I think that would be.
Actually, actually, it's also part of the budget.
It would be part of the budget, I think.
Yeah, it is part of the budget, and there's also, just to make it, remember that there is an, always a specific article to, to set the set the salaries of certain town officials. That's that, that's that town warrant article.
So, I, for A, I guess I shall consult with Fincom and CIPC when creating or amending budgets. But they're also responsible for creating a balanced budget, so I guess I can understand the consultation piece, but I guess I'm struggling with creating or amending, like, I think the amending process, amendment process historically has been back and forth between the town administrator, Fincom, sometimes select board. It's usually those joint meetings, but I guess for the creation of, oftentimes, I think historically, it's been the town administrator creates a balance, a, a balanced budget, or in consultation with Fincom if there's significant shortages, as has happened in the past.
So, the fast answer is, when is, is not an answer, but a question. When is a budget created? Is it created when he's done with his first pass? Is it created after Fincom has gone through it?
Or at ratification of town.
Or, or a town meeting. I, I can't answer that question, because that is so tied up with the way this town has done things. I view the financial operation of the town, or the, the, the budget process as a triangle of town administrator, Fincom, and CIPC. And collectively, that group of people have to come up with the one or two budgets to make the town operable with the money that we have. The word balanced, by the way, was added at the request of the finance committee. Because what the finance committee doesn't want is to say, well, I've done what I can, I'm throwing it over the wall to you and put it all in the hands of the Fincom, they don't want that. In addition, we have a professional as a CFO. And at the end of the day, I don't know any organization anywhere where a CFO does not have control of the budget. Final say. Now, that is not exactly how the town operates, I know, there are still some more changes that are going to have to occur, but I think that this pushes things along in that direction. Will there be future bylaw changes with respect to this? Maybe, I don't know, but we've gotta start with, with, with where the TA is and the Fincom is and CIPC is. And that's sort of what we're documenting here. We've, the last, look at the, the budget cycle for the last budget. Gary created a balanced budget. And Fincom went through that and said, we like this, we don't like that, we wanna make these changes, here's the, here's the, the, the horse trading that goes on in budgeting. But it's still, there is a triangle, I'm not gonna say one is more powerful than another. But this is the way the town, that people have expressed that the town should be moving, and in most ways does operate this way today.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, Peter, in the section that says the town administrator shall consult with the finance and CIPC when creating or amending budget, does that mean that anytime the town administrator wants to make a change to the budget, they have to consult with those two boards before doing so?
Ah, so.
That came up this season.
It is, it is my position that the budget is created only after it's passed at town meeting. That is the creation. The act of, because if you think about writing a book, when is a book, when is the writing of the book done? When it's published. And in that, so, amending in this case really means the fall town meeting.
I don't think it's going to be interpreted that way, when, when people are reading it though, I think it's going to come across as the town administrator basically has to get permission from those two committees before making changes to the budget.
As soon as it fits within the dollar amount that's been approved.
And I, I read it as consult with doesn't necessarily mean.
Didn't say get approval.
Doesn't have to get approval from.
Okay.
He's working with them to get input, but he still has the final say over.
I guess my only concern is, and I'm just speaking candidly from experience, is that the budget evolves constantly, and so if things happen between meetings and a change needs to be made, can the town administrator not make that change without first getting that consultation slash blessing, so to speak, from the other committees, if that makes sense?
So, I think what I am hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is that essentially, instead of doing the line item transfers or anything at the end of the year, it would have to be done before those items were overspent, in, in a sense?
No, so I think I'm, and I guess this is where maybe the clarification is needed, so I understand that Peter is saying that technically creating and amending the budget both have to do with town meeting. I think as a, a layperson reading this, I would interpret those to be as during the budget process of creating the budget, amending the budget, because we constantly amend the budget during the budget season as things evolve, and I think that the challenge in the past is, is that there hasn't been that fluidity within the town administrator's office to make changes without getting the approval of those, and, and then you're kind of held to the next time you have a meeting, or when can you pu- publish or share this information, so I just, I worry that maybe it, it leaves room for interpretation of how each person on board may interpret that.
Okay, so.
So could we add a piece to that letter A that states creating or amending a budget after it's passed at town meeting? Just to specify.
Say, the, her use of the word amending of a budget that's still in process is actually, is not correct, that is a misunderstanding of the word. I mean, from, from one, in one definition, amend is any change, but that is not the definition usually used in law, however, I don't, I, I have to think about words to add to actually clarify, and that's the problem, is clarification.
Is, how did, what's the term used if it's, is it a finalized budget, adopted budget, maybe?
Provide definitions then, of what?
Yeah. Because I can, I can see where, and, and I think this is part of the reason why we're doing this, is because we don't wanna have to.
Interpret.
Interpret, and we want to be able to allow the budget process to go smoothly without, you know.
And I think if, if we're calling in E, we call the town administrator the chief financial officer, then the CFO doesn't have the latitude to make adjustments in, in a very fluid time anyway, then that's taking that authority as chief, in, in my mind, CFO out of, of control, and I can understand there needing to be maybe final level conversations and review by Fincom and CIPC and everything. But I think to try to keep those boards or those committees up to date with everything, especially as we get into the, the budget season when state aid is ever evolving and bills are coming in at different amounts and everything. Um, I remember even this past year, right up till town meeting, we were getting adjusted numbers from insurance, health insurance, and town insurance, and we just got the state, state budget passed, so we were all based off of our local aid as, as projections at that point, so I, I struggle a little bit with, with how much, if we want the town administrator to be CFO, which I think is the direction most towns have gone, I can understand they're also wanting to be oversight or, or buy-in from, from Fincom, because they're representing ta- our town, um, and CIPC to do, to, for the capital. So that's where I struggle.
I, I think when I look at it, I look at two separate budgets. One is the ongoing budget, and two is the forecasted capital budget. So, if the forecast changes in the current budget, oh yeah, then you talk to capital improvement, how can we make changes, what's going on? But I don't see CIPC as a factor in consulting with us, and I could be wrong, because this is a new process, but in the current budget, because we've all already discussed, and we know what items we're gonna be recommending this year. And unless you wanna change those recommendations, then you would come back to us, but those recommendations have gotta come through the select board for the article, and Fincom has to approve it, so I don't see where that's gonna be a big issue, so I see it more from the finance committee's standpoint. But certainly, when we're there creating it, I, I don't know how we could be effective in, in the amending of the budget, I don't see anything of that, because ours is pretty set in cement.
I was just gonna say, I'm sorry, Jen, I.
No, please.
I think that it would be helpful to have it be explicit, that the town administrator has some sort of, as a CFO, ownership of that budget and the freedom to be able to work with it, because it really is a working document, constantly changing. And, and so I think the, um, you know, that the previous dynamic of.
Power struggle.
The power struggle of, you know, one entity owning that spreadsheet and nobody can touch it and change it, and I think that's where a lot of, of errors came into play, so I think if we're making the statement that the town administrator is the CFO, I think we have to really allow them to have that responsibility without there being that power struggle.
What if we just change the, the wording of where it says the town administrator shall consult with? In my line of work, shall means that's a requirement.
Yes.
So if we change that to may, may consult, so if Austin feels on a particular item that he's looking to adjust, a non-finalized, non-adopted, he can reach out as needed to the appropriate committees, but it's not a requirement.
But that suggests that he never needs to go to the Fincom, that it's never required to discuss the operating budget with Fincom.
Well.
So, is there a requirement?
About that, because I think, first of all, that ultimately, if I'm creating a budget and presenting it, ideally I want it to be adopted at town meeting. And for these, for these two budgets, there's three important committees. The select board that's creating the warrant, I need their recommendation, finance committee, they're gonna be asked for their recommendation, and capital for the capital budget. So I need, whether you ha, I mean, that's, the more and more we're going about A, now I'm wondering why it's even there, because part of the process alone, the budget schedule I presented to the Fincom and to the select board on Monday was the budget schedule and the process, and you see involvement with all three committees, and ultimately, their formal recommendation for the budget to be adopted at town meeting. And there's a process involved with all of that.
I think that goes without saying, absolutely, there's gonna be input, but I think to, to Tamika's point, the concern is that you won't have the autonomy to make minor adjustments, if you will, without getting approval from said boards. And we want to make sure that you don't have to go through those hoops for something like that.
Well, again, this is consult, it's not seek approval from, that's a different thing, because there is another element that we'll talk about when we get to Fincom. Fincom's responsibility, Fincom's power by MGL is to present the budget at town meeting. Now, what that means is not defined, and it is, but, and some people believe that it means that the Fincom makes the motion, and that's the way we've acted recently, but there's nothing that says that has to be. It could be nothing more than Fincom that writes the document that describes the budget, and that might be all of their duty, that is so unclear. But because the way the town has acted recently is that the the finance committee makes the motion, then at the end of the day, the motion is all that matters. So if, worst case, I'll go back to a few. So if worst case, I'll go back to a few years ago where. This is quite a few years ago now, when the select board had one budget and the FinCom had a different budget and they were both at town meeting. Talk about pain and agony. And if FinCom has to make the motion, then then it doesn't matter the budget that he created. It doesn't matter what you all think you're putting on the budget, all that matters are the words that are spoken in the motion at town meeting. Cause that is what the town will vote on.
Right, but that doesn't.
It it can be, but there's a whole, I'm just saying, there is a power dynamic that is extremely unclear in law. And that I didn't even try to deal with, cause there's no way I'm gonna clean that up in this iteration of bylaws, because that is a town. Historic process, because at the end of the day, that takes all the authority away from the town administrator. At the end of the day, town administrator, it doesn't matter what the town administrator wants, all that matters is what FinCom motions.
I'm not gonna say that, forget it.
So we're trying to get a step there, but we're not.
I mean, I think there's value to having. Buy in from FinCom as there is. Having buy in from CIPC before getting to town meeting, but I think and I'm trying. The past few years that I've been kind of through actively through the budgeting season has been. Very difficult from, I think, all sides, I I think and and I think. Trying to clarify how to make that less difficult and successful is is what we need to really focus on and. So I can also see in instances that there is value to somehow explicitly stating that there needs to be. Collaboration, coordination, some some other word. With FinCom. If the CFO is is in charge of the budget, but to to Peter's point, there needs and to what Austin said, you're not gonna. Austin's not gonna go without the the blessing of of the people who are going to help get it through town meeting, right? And so at some point, I think that also needs to be somehow stated, because I think that there may be ins. There could in far, far future be instances where there's an administrator. Who thinks that they can just.
We have experience with administrators that have personal conflicts with finance committee, we've seen it.
So I think that that's a a little bit of how to 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 what I what I think and what I think this. Is saying is give the the power of creating of the fi- the chief financial officer to the town administrator. While also having a a working relationship with. The oversight committee.
So I was just gonna say, I think that um. Folks that have been around can probably agree with me that I think the beginning of every budget season is the argument of whose budget does it belong to? And I think that now is our opportunity to kind of clarify things, so when we go into the, you know, the budget season. That everybody's on the same page and there really isn't a question, that it that it's more of a collaborative effort instead of a contentious effort. And I think too in saying that the town administrator is the chief financial officer, I think that also correlates to essentially. Execution of the budget over the course of the fiscal year and so while the finance committee is involved with the adoption of it. The rest of the time, it's falling to the town administrator to make sure that that budget, you know, that we're spending within that budget, we're monitoring it, things like that, so I think that. A certain level of respect has to be given to the responsibility that comes with that, that goes beyond, you know, the CIPC and the FinCom, if that makes sense.
So, yeah, so I mean, it makes sense to, I I think, keep it for the whole creating or amending, but again, I.
Yeah, I I have enough to to clarify the language.
Shall consult and collaborate with. Because it's, yeah, it it really should be, you wanna in include that collaboration piece, that's that's a given, but. Not that it has to be approved.
I think I struggle with the shall part, that it has to be and also by not somehow stating that there should be some level of. Dialogue.
Right.
So I know we can, you have a note, I have a note. Piecing that out and and I think once we get to the FinCom bylaw also that there's some help in there, okay.
And the other thing, when you look at, again, the two budgets, operating and capital, finance really dupe uh deals with operating. They don't really deal with capital budgets. That's not their job, so if we're dealing with a capital budget, yeah, town minister should consult with the finance. Capital Improvement Committee, so I can answer that, but the other piece, the finance, I mean, there should be. Some dialogue there, you're right, between those two organizations, um which I haven't seen in a while for that. So um. I I guess. I like your may, but I'm thinking, maybe we should force the administrative consult with finance. Put him on the line, don't let him back off because he may consult and they're doing something that they're pushing back hard on, I don't know.
Which I I think I'm fine with that, as long as there's something in a another bylaw section of the finance that specifically states. What that they don't have to approve and a a change or an adjustment to a budget item, that that would be.
And I think I struggle with the fact that if it's gonna stay shall consult when creating or amending budgets, I feel like that gets. That can be very interpreted, so every time an updated number comes in from the state and the. Town administrator wants to go in and amend the budget, then he they can't because they haven't had that consultation. And I think that that gets dicey, like there there's a a a separation of what's realistic versus. The the actual intent, so I think that's.
Adding that note about an adopted budget or. Whatever we feel is appropriate.
So definitely.
Let me let me work on some wording, we'll bring it back next time. I think we're gonna see the section that I might like absolutely least in this, come on. Town administrator shall regulate at least once a quarter, review the town's expenditures for conformance with the budget.
That was never in there?
No.
This whole bylaw is new, so. And I know that this was one of the conversations we had before also about what was realistic versus should it be a job description item versus a bylaw versus like.
I have no problems tripping out too. As the CFO, he's responsible for the for conformance with the budget.
I was gonna say, I feel like it's a little redundant if we're declaring them as. CFO, but.
My my. My only thought is transparency again in terms of. How do we know how the budget's doing as a select board?
Sign the warrant. Sign that warrant. Gives you the ledger, which I'd be happy to take that over if you don't wanna do that. I I was actually, for for some reason, I missed this part, Peter, because, sorry, Harry, I um. I for some reason thought that this was a reporting requirement, so reviewing, I'm doing. Probably more than I should anyways right now, but right now I don't have an obligation to report to the finance committee or the select board. I would be fine if I said the town administrator shall regularly regularly at least once per quarter, report the town's expenditures. Period.
I like that better, cause that you'd obviously need to be reviewing it on a regular basis to be able to report on it, so that's kind of.
Are we in balance with the budget?
Gives you an update, how are things looking? How are we versus expectation, yes, we had this big expenditure upfront, which is what we thought was going to happen, but we're okay for the rest of the year.
Yeah, I like that.
Some type of reporting.
And we do kind of, I mean, when we sign the warrants and everything, we usually try to ask are there any, you know, big expenses or anything out of the ordinary or whatever. But um I know in the past there had been questions, because some of the line items are spent at a hundred percent essentially by July first, because it's a front loaded expense. And the the question was, well, why is that such and it's because it's a front loaded expense, um and.
And we pay for it all upfront, so we know we won't be surprised later.
And sometimes. There's a significant prepayment discount, um.
So. Yeah, just a.
So Austin, you would wanna keep that in?
Keep it, but change it to report.
Right, change to review to report, yeah.
And I will probably add to FinCom and Select Board just to clarify who's gonna get the reports. Not that you would need that, but. I, the last thing I want is a town meeting somebody to say, who's he gonna report to?
I would just put it on the town website.
There you go, but actually, that's a great idea. Actually, it's a. That's interesting, I hadn't thought about that, it's held on a good idea.
Then every, then it's there for everybody to review.
Quarterly budget report.
I have a question, maybe this isn't where this is and I don't remember off the top of my head the select board, but what's the. Is it MGL that we have to, select board signs the treasury warrant and payroll every two weeks? Or is that something as CFO, the town administrator could do a s- given that they are now required to report?
Fast answer, I have no idea, but I'll find out.
I know at one point we had during covid, we had, the board had authorized the town administrator to do those signatures because. We weren't meeting in person, we were, everything was remote and it was easier to then, but I don't know, and I think if we're calling. The town administrator CFO and requiring this quarterly recording, there's checks and balances there. We would still have access to everything to review as as needed, um. But I don't know, and then that would also take out the absolute necessary requirement that we're meeting every two weeks. Right, if there's a snowstorm or vacations or or whatever. I don't know what the history of all of that is and I don't know how the board feels, but I'm just trying to think checks and balances.
Next meeting.
Find out first.
Yeah, let's let's find out what the statutory requirement is and maybe we add something to the. Select Board bylaw that you can delegate. Let's let's find out, find out.
I can go in anytime I want, look at all the. Anybody can see the stuff I want, so. Several phone call can, if there's any major issue there, so I don't have a big issue with that.
All right. Um moving down, town administrator shall be the chief procurement officer as defined in the general laws, chapter thirty B.
Will that, okay, defined it GL three, because there's another issue with procurement. Under the. Board of Public Works.
There should not be, the fact that that we have had recently two chi- two procurement officers who. Okay, back up, what that means is not only does he have the power, but he has the responsibility to be trained according to mass general laws and the. All of those procure, there's a lot of law about what the procurement office, chief procurement officer does. And because he's gonna be the chief procurement officer, he doesn't have to be the only, but because he's the chief at the end of the day, he's responsible for nurturing. That all financial and MGL a- and and thirty B policies are obeyed. When Joe was here, he was also a certified procurement officer, which was very handy during the time when our. Town administrator was not.
And he was designated as the chief.
Right, this uh the Board of Public Works was the ones to do it, but they designated him to be the procurement officer.
The select board would do that designation, because this is this is an executive. An administrative function for the town.
Yeah, and it's required through mass general law to have a chief procurement officer.
Right, that's one, but there's also a an issue, there's a section in. Then the uh uh planning, uh planning board, Board of Public Works, where. The Board of Public Works becomes the procurement officer for the Board of Public Works and those things. So that's why I'm, should it be, I don't I don't wanna reference it now, but I.
The vast answer is, he is the town's chief procurement officer, that is not to say that someone else can cannot be a procurement officer.
Well, I'm just saying, sometimes we put in the geography, if unless otherwise, but unless specified by other bylaws, et cetera. Unless we get rid of it in the Board of Public Works, but that's MGL.
I don't know if you, I don't, I I think mass general law requires designation of one chief procurement officers, as Peter mentioned, we could have a whole procurement department where everyone. My intention is to have Tamika receive the procurement training, so she can do procurement, however, the chief procurement officer is responsible for it. My question for you, Peter, is in chapter thirty B, the authority of the chief procurement officer also. Includes awarding and entering into contracts. Within the current set of proposed bylaws, select board has that contract authority. That I see as a challenge.
Uh then I'll have to take a look and resolve that, because we may need to add words to select board that say. Sole authority for entering in for negotiating entering into, except for contracts that are. Designated by statute to be blah, 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 I more words that can be added there that make sense and that will resort, will remove that conflict. So let me take.
Thanks for bringing that up, Austin, cause I had questions about the contract piece, because. The procurement officer is the one that ultimately.
And it makes sense that you would want the procurement officer to enter into contracts for business supplies for many things.
I don't wanna spend time on.
We can make a note to come back to it too, Harry.
TA shall act as the town's chief information officer. That came up in one of the bylaws that I saw, I think it made sense to put the responsibility for that in the town administrator's office.
And I think.
For what media?
What do you mean for what media?
Well, uh which one were you reading?
Uh G.
And I think we appoint other inform, oh, that's records officers, yeah.
Records officers and the s- he would, the TA was responsible, but we. Farm out the responsibilities for all the data processing.
Again, as the chief, it's the team of.
Exactly.
Creating or.
This one was a Mike Nicholson favorite, the town administrator shall be the main point of contact for the media regarding town affairs. And the town administrator shall be the main point, this is not, that was not intended to be derogatory, I've. Uh main point of contact for intergovernmental affairs at the local, state and national levels.
Put international, so I can go to.
I'm very sure Sweden would love to hear what the town.
I think we need a sister city somewhere abroad.
Town administrator shall supervise the administration of all appointed departments and committees. Town administrator shall have access to all town books and papers for information necessary to the proper performance of the administrator's duties.
Seems intentionally ambiguous.
What's that?
It it is intentionally incredibly broad. So. The TA has a whole series of powers and he needs to be able to look at everybody's books to make sure that. All the policies are being followed, that he that he for which he is responsible.
One thing, uh one thing that came up, this is not without, not for any particular reason. Facilities? So for example, we have a contractor, we need to do some some work. There's some buildings that I currently don't have access to. For whatever reason. For whatever reason.
Is that not in here? Cause at one point, I remembered that being in, but I don't know that it's made all the cuts, let, I'll take a note.
Yeah, I don't.
Just, I mean, you mean like physical access to?
I'll, I've got a note. It does get funny, should you have access to the school, the schools, which are town facilities? It's, it's a funny question, I don't know the answer. I mean, I could easily make the case that you should have access to the firehouse, to the old firehouse, it's a town facility.
And the library?
The lib, yep.
And the wood studio, wood house.
Yep, all of those, so I, I think, I think the schools are a very funny case that I haven't intellectually worked through.
Well, we're working on a fingerprint, so maybe we could have that done.
Okay, L is one of mine, and I think it's really, really critical. The town administrator shall have voice but no vote in any meeting of any appointed committee, including executive session. And this is the one power that may not be delegated to another individual or committee.
You say that so that he can't say, uh, send somebody else to speak on.
Exactly.
His behalf.
Exactly. But the town administrator must have voice at all appointed committees. Can't say the same thing for electors, cause we can't dictate that, I'm sorry.
Look, so question about the, so. The power may not be delegated, um, let's say, for example, Mister Konakiolis, how do you say his last name?
Konaklioli, yeah, close enough, I think I was close enough.
Article, and we created a new assistant town administrator. Um. Would this, would L prohibit an assistant town administrator to attend an appointment, appointing committee on my behalf? Speak on my behalf?
See, no, I feel like that might require a whole new bylaw for assistant town administrator. Is that, is the expectation that they would be able to fill every role?
Well.
That you have?
Uh, well, the first answer is yes.
Yeah, usually there's a line in assistant town managers, town administrators that says. Um, was it upon, uh, or in the absence of the town administrator, the assistant assumes all responsibilities of.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you have ex officio on any committee you wanna sit on. So you have the right to be there, so I don't know what the purpose to delegate, I mean, yeah, you can delegate. But I don't know if you can transfer that ex officio status to them.
But, but let's say, for example, I'm going on vacation, and even if we didn't have an assistant town administrator, I'm going on vacation and I am an ex officio. Or a member of, I don't know, and I say, Tamika, can you go to the meeting for me and and just report on my behalf? Or I really think it's important to stress this, this would prohibit enabling Tamika or any other, anyone else to attend.
It doesn't, it doesn't prohibit someone else, but by rules of procedure. This says by law, F, TA shall be recognized, shall have voice, you're absolutely. It is the responsibility of the chair to recognize you when have you speak, and that responsibility is not transferred to someone else.
But I think. It, we've had in the past where a TA has gone on vacation and named, uh, you like. One of the chiefs or Becky or someone as kind of acting on their behalf, should something emergent come up? And I guess the question is if something emergent in that situation, or if there was a, an assistant town administrator. If something emergent came up and that named acting. Person. Would they not be able to, they could attend, but they ne- wouldn't necessarily be guaranteed a voice.
So I would, my interpretation of this wording is that an acting or interim town administrator has this power. So he goes away on vacation, Select Board designates an acting for the duration. Someone acting in the office is the town administrator for that duration.
Do we need to specify that here, town administrator or acting town administrator? If that's the correct terminology?
I wholly understand the intent of this, and I don't disagree with the intent of it, but I think that there, I don't wanna put ourselves in a corner. For very legitimate reasons that.
Well, let me ask a question, how frequently has the town administrator in the, since it's been here? Been, I'll pick on ConCon, been to a ConCon meeting or been to a solar committee meeting? Actually, they've been, I know the town administrator been to the solar committee meeting because the town administrator was a member of the committee. Um, um. A COA meeting, a.
But I think there.
An ag comm meeting.
I think they have been in attendance in some meetings, um, more so than others. And depending on the, what was going on, Margaret, I think, attended a, a lot of meetings. And I think when RDIC was going on, um, there was a lot of town administrator attendance at. Whether those were official meetings or if it was a working group, I'm not one hundred percent sure, but town administrator was involved in those. Um, I think Mike was involved in some meetings, um, not to the extent that Margaret was.
I mean, from Margaret on, they weren't, I mean, I don't know, I can't tell you when I saw that CIPC meeting, so.
So tomorrow, for example, I am due to, to attend two committees at the same time. ConCon and CIPC, right, roughly right around the same time.
We're only gonna take ten minutes.
And if we're lucky, we'll take half an hour, we'll be done in time.
Yeah, so I, so I think in, in. If I could, I would love to attend everything, and I would love to be invited to as, as much committee meetings as possible. And while I, I have a hard time saying no, I think what would be nice would be able to say, yes, I would love to attend. If not, I will send Tamika or the DPW director, for example, on my behalf. And I just don't know if this allows that opportunity to do so. So, so the committee could say, per section L of this town administrator bylaw, you can't, we're not gonna listen to them.
We only want the town administrator when really maybe one of the chiefs or DPW or the librarian. Has better insight into what is being discussed and can make that meeting and.
Or if I bring him with me to a meeting, I bring the police chief with me to a CIPC meeting. To talk about the capital request for the police, uh, yeah, for the police department. Okay, that case is separate, because that's an extra person who may or may not be recognized by the chair. I can't, I, I, I cannot in good faith write a bylaw that says that. The chair of an appointed committee shall always recognize somebody the town administrator brings with him. And that's, that's the wrong bylaw to set. So, so I can understand, if we wanted to remove this, if we wanna say that this is delegatable, fine. And we just remove that second sentence, that's straightforward.
Would you?
Should we, God forbid, consider a long term disability?
Same thing, and I have an acting.
Um, do you see yourself, and I'll go back over my fifteen years, okay? Do you see yourself attending the committee for the full length of the committee meeting?
It's on the agenda.
Well, that's my point, uh, for example, we might say, you know, we're gonna take care of some housekeeping, but the real stuff starts at seven o'clock. Not six thirty, so show up at seven or seven fifteen. So you can split yourself between, because we've always tried to be time sensitive to the TA's needs. Um, or the fire chief's needs, so we don't make them sit there through everything. So if, if you wanna attend, uh, just let us know when you'll be there, so we can arrange our agenda to kinda. Fill that, fill that stuff in, cause that's what we've done over the last fifteen years.
Okay.
Maybe, we can maybe mull over it a little bit, but maybe it's the town administrator or designee. Shall have a voice, but I think my.
I, I don't have to say, I don't need to say a designee in this case, because as we've said before, any power can be de- can be delegated.
Uh, I will tell you, if a designee shows up, that doesn't have the power of the town TA and understand really what's going on. Our committee, we'd have a hard time with that, because of what we'd get into.
We can mark it, Peter.
Yep, we'll mark it, and we are actually just at eight oh one, so I'd just like to, we'll, we'll stop there. Continue next time, our only duty now is to figure out when the next time is.
So our. The fourteenth is an off meeting, that would be this upcoming Monday.
Mm hmm.
I think the sixteenth is out, there's a.
Correct.
Cable meeting, is that, so we would be.
Cable, Paul and I would both have to be there, so.
Yeah.
Um, the twenty first is our regular scheduled meeting. I don't know how our agenda's looking, if we think we could get through at least the rest of town administrator bylaw during that meeting. Um, it looks like it's grants, um.
It's half a page of minor powers, I would call them.
Of TA?
Yeah.
So it looks like it's grant administration, coordinate, coordination and administration of grants, um, authority to close town offices or departments. Um, the flag flown at half staff and, um. I mean, delegation.
To Tom's point, on Monday, I, I would certainly rather extend our regular meetings a little bit. Try and do some more that way.
Yeah, to get going.
Yeah.
If this, if we're all gonna finish up on those few things which isn't major issues, we could probably do it after that.
Yeah.
Is there any objection to finishing it off tonight? Just continue for another half an hour.
Norm says no. I mean, personally, I.
I don't have.
I don't have to get home to a family, uh, so I'm not, for me, Tamika has to be here unless she wants to leave, so.
No, thanks.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, Austin has to be here, I have to be here, Peter has to be here if we do that, so. I mean, I have no problem finishing off those, I think those are fast personally, unless you think there's.
So, Norm, when you're ready to leave, say so, and I'll just adjourn ad hoc.
No, no, no.
No? Okay.
We all agree with them to continue?
Yep, sure.
So we continue sharing. So I have a note about L, good. M, town administrator shall coordinate the administration of grants by collecting and distributing information concerning available grants. Establishing uniform procedures for grant applications, health policy, preparing and assisting in developing grant proposals. Monitoring grants to ensure fiscal and program compliance and ensuring that any grant is intending adding. Personnel or increasing operating costs in any fiscal year is approved by the Select Board and by any impacted department prior to submission thereof. So, this isn't he does it all. Because DPW has historically done a bunch of grants, and the police do their grants, and the fire do their grants. But coordination, there needs to be a central point of, of, of coordination throughout the town, and to make sure that we don't have conflicting grants, things like that.
And this would be delegatable, should we hire a.
Yeah, absolutely.
Grant coordinator or someone that could pick that piece up as well.
Well, yeah, it, we can discuss that at next, next year or the. Cause it won't be done in this year's budget. Hiring somebody for brands.
Well, yeah, it's not part of FY twenty four.
Something that.
Right, no, but I just was.
Yep.
I guess I'm of the belief that since this is a new bylaw, we. Postpone hiring anybody until we can see how that town administrator can work it out and handle it.
I think there was just conversation as if there was grant monies available or anything, or if it.
For somebody?
Right, or if it fell under a, a piece, a job description of someone else that's all, being hired. Take on a significant piece of that or something.
Cause I think you have pretty much delegating authority, if you come across a grant to have either DPW or police do it. I mean, you could recommend to them that here's a grant, go get it type of thing, right?
And oftentimes you end up working together on it, you know, there, there's subject matter experts on preparing it. But there's other parts of the grant application that often end up flowing through our office anyways.
Okay.
Okay. Town administrator shall have the authority to close town office or department, except public safety departments for public safety reasons. For a day or a portion thereof, why do I hate public safety said so many times so close to each other, but whatever. Uh, non essential employees scheduled to work during the closer shall be compensated for such period.
Is that standard for a bylaw?
That's a fair question, um, and I, and I don't remember exactly where this particular clause came from. I actually don't have a problem stripping out one, cause that sure sounds a whole lot more like policy than it does good bylaw.
Yeah. Because I think, I. I would hope that there's, I think some of this came from the covid closures and everything, but above and beyond that, but also the intent of. Whether they were considered to be working remotely or not, or if it's a public safety, you know. There's an emergency and the building is, needs to be evacuated or whatever.
Yeah, the policies can be adjusted as needed, potentially, whereas this just is a blanket.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, it, yeah, it just doesn't seem like it necessarily applies to a bylaw versus.
Yep, that's fair. This O was a lot longer, we cut it way down, cause too many words is bad. The town administrator may have the flag of the town flown at half staff when appropriate. It is important to note that town administrator has nothing to do with the flying of the state flag or the US flag, those are handled by different code. And he doesn't have authority to change that, he only has authority to change the, the, the town flag, that's it.
Can I ask?
Sure.
A silly question? The locations of the town versus the state flag, do we have a state flag flying in town?
I've no idea.
Uh, we're talking about like state of Massachusetts flag, not, this is gonna sound really dumb, a state flag pole, if you will, with the American flag?
No, no, it's usually done that the US flag is one, masses two in town is three.
Okay, gotcha, alright, thank you.
And in fact, no flag, I mean, by code, no flag is allowed to be flown higher than the US flag.
Okay, yeah, okay, now, now I'm reading it the right way, okay.
But to your point, I'm not sure, I know public safety building has a few different flags, I don't know off the top of my head. If they have a, a Rutland flag, I think they do, but I don't know off the top of my head.
In truth, I have no idea that our town, if our town flag is flown anywhere in town.
And I know council and aging was having conversations about having flag poles installed over at the building on Glenwood. And other than that, I only know of the American flags on the common here, you know, the, cause there's been conversation about what is the official, like. Even American flags have it lowered, um.
I think, I feel like I've seen the state flag, and it might be at the fire station, I know they have more than one.
Yeah.
About one right there, yeah.
But I mean outside.
Yeah, but I'm, if we have one in this room.
I think there were two TAs ago, there was some discussion about getting it done, but I don't think it ever happened.
I don't think so, me either.
I think it's fine to delegate that authority, because that way, if generally, it's either. There's a political interest somehow to have it lowered, and that would go through the TA's office. Or the TA is aware of something that's happened in town, that then through either community or department heads or whatever, so I think that's.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to see it delegated, and I mean, think about how many soldiers we have that are bronze stars. Or silver stars who've fought, that have died, that we simply couldn't recognize them by a flag at half mast. You know, type of thing.
So it's just the, if there's a Rutland flag, where, the Rutland flag is the only one that we would have control over, but yeah. It, it would go through the town administrator's office to be able to do that, because right now, there's no.
That's fine.
Evidence.
Yep. Yep.
Good, that would be good. County administrator may delegate in writing to an individual or committee any duty or responsibility hereunder unless. Otherwise prohibited by state or local law or vote of the select board. Such delegation shall define the scope and duration of said delegation and the copy of such delegation shall be timely provided to the designees, the select board, and the town clerk. I see a little s- loop here that seems a little weird. Because select board wouldn't be notified unless that, until the decision's been made and he's notifying you. And if he's notifying you, what's your opportunity to object? According to the top level P.
So he's delegating his.
Yes, his authority.
Duty or responsibility.
Yeah.
Or any portion thereof.
Is that with our, within our right to object and tell him he cannot delegate to an individual?
At the end of the day, he's your employee. And you can tell him, no, you may not take this action. It would be. A very rare, and I can't even think of the circumstances that would make it happen that the select board would object.
Well, is this similar to the ratification question as far as. Uh, a notification of such action and then if there's no. Negative it holds? I don't know.
If we look, yeah, if we look at all these, TA is responsible for. If he's gonna delegate that in writing to someone and then it comes to us afterwards and we have no power to do anything about it other. Because it doesn't give us any power here to do that, he simply says he can delegate. Is that something we really wanna do? Agree with?
Well, but there's also the. The timing of of something, because there could be something that comes up that requires an immediate delegation and. It's not like for, it's not like we could hold an emergency meeting to say, do we approve of what you're trying to do, who you're trying to do this for?
Well, the other thing that's important is the way this is worded, the select board vote would only be for nay. Would would only be to deny.
Right.
And we would know the scope and duration of it.
Right.
I mean, it's one of those professionalism things I would expect the town administrator to notify in advance.
As much as.
You know, as much as practicable, I mean, there there are there are limits, if something has to be done now.
Right.
And he has to be in two places at once, he can't be in two places at once, so he needs to delegate.
So I. I think if it goes to the chair, the board chair, you know. And then the board chair can notify the other board members or something like that, but the board chair would have the ultimate decision to say. This is the way it goes.
Uh, I, I have seen a town administrator without that being there take advantage of that. So. Going forward with any town administrator, I. I'm a bit. I don't know how I can clean it up. Yes, he needs to have the authority to do that. Unless there's a hurricane or a tornado coming through. He should have enough time, or she, whoever the TA is, should have enough time to notify the select board. That he's going to do this.
I agree, and that's that's in here, it's just the.
Is there, sorry Jen, is there a way to add in where it's in P where it says town administrator may delegate in writing to an individual or committee any duty or responsibility? Somehow in that, that that the. Part two is included in that, so if there, if the town administrator is delegating the authority. The town clerk and select board are notified at the same time that that designation is made, and then if there's. A concern at the select board level, then that would be. A no vote that would have to happen, but it would then be an emerg, I mean, I think that it's tough because. Harry, I understand your your concern and I don't, and I'm just trying to kind of think out loud how we can.
You've seen it in the past.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, in other words, if you've got a catastrophic, um, happening, you know, okay, so. You've got absolutely no time to do anything other than to notify, you know, the board that this has happened already. Okay, so in other words, you know, two thirty in the morning. Um, a plane coming out of Worcester Airport hits, uh, hits the town hall.
Heights.
Alright, there we go, yeah. Okay, so in other words, you know, it has happened, so in other words, okay, that's where you have to go from, but.
But the concern is, is. Being notified in that timely manner so that if the board.
Had significant concerns.
Concerns with that designee, they could be addressed before the action is carried out.
Or at the same time that the action is carried out, so then if there's significant concerns.
There's oversight.
There, there could be, there's notification, so there could be an emergency meeting called, or or something that it would be. A shorter timeframe because the timely, I guess the copy, if if the town administrator is notifying someone in writing anyway, then it's just a matter of. Ceasing additional people, um, and then. I think that that timely language in part two could be interpreted. Differently for different individuals, and so I think to Harry and and our concerns. That if it's something that the board doesn't think is in the best interest of the town. Um, what's considered timely notification and.
I mean, if the issue is he's gonna do something and it's gonna be a timeframe of two or three days.
Right.
But if it's a timeframe of six weeks.
Right.
Different story, so there's no way, if there's a timeframe of two or three days, we even get to vote on this thing.
Right.
Unless we call a special, like an emergency meeting, and I would think that, I mean, it would have to be a a. A negative vote of the board in order to stop, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a positive vote, we would only call an emergency meeting if there was significant concerns and the board wanted to stop it. Um, and so I think that that's where the timeliness of notification could come in, but. I think also if this is kind of going to the town administrator delegating for. The town administrator's time, the grant management piece, for example, like. It's a one-time notification that, hey, I've done this, or. Um, you know, I think there's some things that are just to be expected and and less of concern because it's, it makes sense, I.
I mean, I know this is a kind of a catch-all, because I can't think of a situation where this would come into play. Designating these powers to a committee or another individual. Unless it was extremely, extremely catastrophic.
Circumstances, yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, in some ways I'm saying, okay, I just have. When you've gone through certain situations in the past, they stay with you and you remember them, and you try not to have them. Come up again. Um, but I I I just don't know what it would be to have that, so.
But does it hurt to, like you said, Leah, modify it so that when the designee is notified, the select board is also notified at the same time? So that that determines.
Yeah, I'll find a way to integrate the notification into the top section.
Austin, does that make sense? I mean, do you understand?
Yes and no, so it sounds like, um. Past practices.
Past history.
Past history, so without getting into details or specifics, because I'm I'm just thinking of, so for example, um. Section D, subsection one, uh, B and C. Right, that's the human res, some some of the human resources responsibilities. Maybe this is my formal notification to you now, even though this bylaw is not in place, but I think naturally some of these come through with hiring new staff. Human resources coordinator will have some of these responsibilities, so. I guess, is there something that's that's happened in the past where you would. Have a substantial.
Concern?
Yeah, I I guess I'm just confused, what, maybe what happened without getting into details that where this would be an issue?
Yeah, I don't know either, so it's.
Yeah, yeah, now this. But I guess I could use the word overreaching on certain issues that I think should not have been done, so.
Overreaching by the administrator?
Yes. Certain things that should not have been done, so.
So.
Uh, a- and and again, I don't wanna.
So.
Great job, but.
And I, so I guess.
You and I can talk about this personally if.
Yeah, well, so, but this is talking about delegation of my explicit, my, the administrators authorities that are within this. I can't delegate something I don't have authority on.
Right.
So if it's an overreach, I'm I'm delegating something that I.
You shouldn't.
Or already overreaching for, right.
Yeah.
Delegating, right, but that. You've done it, but now we haven't been notified of it until later, and. If it's a short delegation, cause you're out for one day or two days, we have no way to vote on that or anything, so. And I'm not, I I'm saying, I don't know if it'll ever happen, but. I don't wanna see the town not have the ability to be able to react to something, that's all. Twenty years from now, five years from now. Okay, I mean, I don't see these bylaw, I mean, we've had an opportunity here and I don't see the next select we're going through this again, so.
So I think maybe we can. Mark it as questions about the oversight piece and Austin, maybe we can have some conversations. So that you understand where we're concerns are coming from and then. Have.
Yeah, I. I'm not trying to, I don't, I don't think what this says is we're trying to take anything away. We're just trying to, in my opinion, protect against something we have no. Idea of or how to even change, cause it happens so fast.
And and the real answer is you won't be able to.
Yeah, see, that's.
If some, if there's a three-hour delegation for a task, there's no chance for you to do it, if it's a three-day, it's tough for you to get a meeting together.
Right.
So you have to accept that the that the written notification is, by the time you would meet. Notification is something that already happened and is not something that you're going to have any power to to prevent, and. Again, is this, this goes to the core assertion that we have hired. A professional town administrator, and if we haven't, we're gonna have all kinds of problems and this will be one of the least of them.
And I guess I struggle a little bit with also. That it needs to be, the delegation needs to be in writing every time, because it could be a. A three-hour, hey, you're the subject matter expert on this, here's a meeting, can you hop, you know, I know during COVID, there were a lot of times that. That, you know, the board of health was on more meetings than the town administrator, because that was their purview, like. So, do we need, do do we need to be notified, does the board of health need to be notified in in a situation like that?
Well, maybe we have a limit, maybe we limit the delegation of more than, pick a time, must be in writing. Cause you're right, it doesn't make sense to delegate something for two hours or an hour, the duration of a meeting in writing, I, that doesn't, that feels like. Over, yeah, well, it's over-processed.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But for a longer term, delegation, I can see the board wanting to have a say. And being able to have a say, but I don't think anything over, I mean, I'm just gonna pick a timeframe. If it's less than a week, is there value in the select board reviewing it? And I picked a week at random, we could talk about what that, what that time quantum is, it doesn't matter, but.
Yeah, and I guess I see it more as like the overall core functions of the position, the the HR piece, and that would be, you know, and I would. Say it would be, you know, uh, in the town administrator update listed whatever that it's, um. We've hired a a HR administrator and these are what the person, some of what the person is being tasked with. And obviously there's oversight, because as as chief of staff, also, the administrator is still there. Um, I think my concerns were more for not so much the. The explicit large picture functions of the job, but some of the the smaller, smaller niche pieces.
Yeah, this to me is, it's just one of those trust factor items, you can't. Like you said, you may never be able to do anything about it, so you've gotta trust that your town administrator that you hired is doing the right thing.
Exactly.
And.
And I think that's.
And that's very hard, considering where we've been in the past.
And I think that's some of what I think I've said a few times, and I think we're all in agreement, that it really puts. All of this is really putting the ownership of hiring. The town administrator on the select board and making sure that it's, the hire is a well-rounded. Candidate to cover all of the tasks.
Right.
So it's scary.
I don't know, I don't know if saying, if we keep it, I don't know if there's anything to change in it or how we change it, unless somebody else has some suggestions, but. Either keep it or get rid of it, I guess. Cause I don't, I don't see any, anybody else does, I don't change to it.
Again, I have some notes to work on, let me, let me work on those, we can.
Okay.
See what comes up next time.
So we finished that bylaw.
Right, TA is, well, until our next review, yeah.
But there's.
It is substantially complete, yeah.
Uh, question on this, um. Some places it mentions qualifications in other bylaws, is that a policy issue, a human resource issue? Or a TA issue to set qualifications for town offices and committees?
Setting qualifications is a human resources function which falls under the human res, chief human resources officer duties of the town administrator.
Okay.
And I think that would come under job dis, policy slash job description.
Exactly.
But it's a good point, because I think.
We have too much diversity, we have too much out of sync in qualifications. Qualifications for this position or such, then we get a higher qualification for this, then we have a lower qualification for this. We need to arrive at some standard, so what you said, people who are applying have some idea of how they're gonna be treated.
Right, and that's some of, I think, what the office is working on also, just even for compen, on the compensation side as well, where they fall on. You know, adjusting the matrix and where they fall on the matrix and everything also.
Okay. So except for a tidy up, that's it.
Alright, so when is our next?
We.
Cause the next one is Board of Public Works, and that I suspect will not be a brief discussion. It's a brief bylaw, it will not be a brief discussion.
Um, so. Do we wanna try to start the Board of Public Works at the end of our meeting on Monday, the twenty first, because it sounds like. I don't know about the fourteenth for anyone else, we would just make the posting if we wanted to meet on the fourteenth, Monday, um. If we wanted to continue, the sixteenth is out, so then the, our next scheduled meeting would be the twenty first. Um, we could look at the twenty third, but I think Jen, you had asked if, I think Wednesdays are tough for Tom. And Jen, you would have to be remote, which is less than ideal, cause I think it's a vacation, I don't know.
Yeah, that, I mean, I'll I'll be, I'll be there for our regular meeting on the twenty first, but I. Would have to respectfully not want to attend a second meeting that that week when I'm on vacation, so.
And and I think the Board of Public Works is too important, I mean, it's convoluted all over the place, so. I think that's something everybody should be here for. But.
So.
I have the. I have the twenty fourth. I have the twenty-fourth, cause that's when we have a CIPC meeting. It's our official meeting.
Yeah, what about Thursday, the seventeen?
Busy, Norm and I are busy. Earthworks Board.
Oh, alright. Something fun.
Um, so we have the twenty-first, which is our regular meeting. Um, we'll try to not do.
May I ask, is it, oh, like, could we skip the Board of Public Works bylaw and maybe pick one that's. Briefer and add that to the end of the August twenty-first meeting to check it off the list, is there anything wrong with going out of order a little bit?
Probably not, cause that's the last bylaw in general government and where we move into is financial matters and the next two are. Really easy, it's the third one that could be a bear, cause that's FinCom.
I was gonna say, maybe we could do the first two, cause it's art- for chapter three, uh, Article One is treasure collector and Article Two is accountant and. I don't know. I haven't.
Just wanna note on the twenty-first. Uh, if we could, cause there'll be an executive session, if we could start with the executive session. Um. It it'll be brief.
Right, but that way, yeah.
But just to allow for the bylaw discussion also, if it's at the end, then you don't have to worry about.
Surely the accountant is a small one, that should. Be nothing.
I believe wholeheartedly that treasure collector is easy.
Okay.
Uh, accountant is easy. Revolving funds is, nobody has to review it, it was passed at the last town meeting, so we don't have to do anything with that one. Um, S- FinCom could be difficult, I don't think CIPC is difficult. But there are some elements that, again, I don't know how deep the discussion will go.
So I would be comfortable adding some at least accountant, a treasure collector and accountant to the end of our. Aiming to add at least those two and then if we can see how the discussion goes. Um, on the night of the twenty-first. And then, um, because. And then we, at the twenty-first. The twenty-eighth is the following Monday. And the thirtieth is the Wednesday, the thirty-first is the Tuesday, I don't remember when school starts, it's that week, so.
You said a lot of words there, you said Wednesday, the thirty-first is Tuesday, but that's a, thirty-first is a Thursday.
It's late.
It is late, it's after eight-thirty, I know, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're saying and intent.
I was looking at the week of the twenty-eighth, of August twenty-eighth, sorry.
School starts on the thirtieth.
What's that?
Wednesday, yeah, the thirtieth.
School starts on Wednesday.
So we'd have to do it Monday.
Is kindergarten the day before, Thursday?
Yeah, yeah.
With that Monday.
Being with you, yeah.
Sorry, which, Monday?
Then we should do it Monday.
The twenty-eighth. That's an off Monday. Oh. We have events committee.
Oh, nice.
Can he delegate? Yeah. Um. Yeah, I think we. Should be able to. Do you feel like we can do that?
What time is the events committee?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Let's. Let's do it on the twenty-eighth and then we can figure it out. Does that work for?
It's okay.
Twenty-eight's okay with me.
Is that okay with you, Norm?
I think so, yeah.
And you're all set, Peter.
And it's the fifth Tuesday of the month, we don't have a meeting.
Oh, well then would the Tuesday, the twenty-ninth work better for people?
Either one is okay with me.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
I hate to like. Make it another night out for Austin, but it's, then we wouldn't have the events committee. Concern.
Wouldn't have that conflict, yeah.
Yeah.
I can do either.
You okay with that?
I'm fine with that, I usually work every Tuesday anyway, so I'm used to that.
Is a Tuesday okay for you? I know it's your off nights, Peter, is that okay?
Oh, it's fine, it's fine.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The twenty-ninth, Tuesday, the twenty-ninth.
Alright.
Sorry.
I got it wrong.
No.
No, oh, alright, sorry, me, twenty-nine.
Twenty-ninth, that's six P M, yeah.
Six, okay.
I want it September, I'm gonna run away for a while.
We're all gonna run away.
Do.
Okay. So we'll do the twenty-ninth at six, Tuesday, the twenty-ninth at six.
Do we wanna specify us, like, that that night is a specific bylaw you want to target?
We're gonna start with Board of Public Works.
And then probably.
If we can, then we move into FinCom because we've already done treasure collector and accountant.
Okay.
Cause that'll be done next Monday. Oh, sorry, the twenty, the twenty-first.
Is that okay? And I think just as a heads up, I think the discussion around the Board of Public Works is really gonna revolve around MGL. Um.
Yeah, so the first thing I'm going to do is to show you guys MGL to see the breadth of responsibilities. Of the Board of Public Works.
And if we can, yeah. And I think also. The vote that, I would like to see how the vote was worded that was taken at town meeting to establish the Board of Public Works. If we can have that, I know it's not, I know.
We can get that, it's it's actually, so do you want the voted, the way it was worded at town meeting or do you want it on the way it was on the ballot? Cause they both passed and they both had to.
Both, then.
Okay.
Do you remember, like, the year?
I can find it from Anita, don't worry about it, Anita and I have been through this a bunch of times.
I was gonna say, I think that I I don't, I have no.
And in fact, I know that Anita sent it to town council. Not terribly long ago, so.
And I know that this is one of the ones that's out for special act adoption, so.
We did get an update today, though, it's cruising along, so.
Oh, did it, did it get through the the third reading committee?
It did.
So it's now to the whole senate?
Yes. Yep, so it's been good progress.
Our special legislation.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Good news.
Alright, so.
But the fast answer is there, it's multiple questions, the first question was to accept. The appropriate sections of MGL.
If you can just send it to us and that way we have it, just. To, so I know, I don't even know when it was. But I know that most of it is referenced off of the MGL. That I think.
Yeah, I'd say there's only one item that I don't see in the MGL. And that specifically deals with landfill.
We'll see.
So.
There's a reason for that, but.
Yeah, I guess there must be.
So. Um, I would, then if we're good to go, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
No, it's second, no problem.
And we'll do roll call, Jen.
Uh, Ledger, aye.
Sekman, aye.
Matt, an aye.
Whitman, aye, we're adjourned at eight-thirty-eight.
You are.
To adjourn the ad hoc bylaw committee meeting.
Lynn, care to speak up and say second?
I'll say second.
The speaker may have turned off. She did speak, I heard that, I I saw her light up, so I'm gonna assume that it's second, roll call, Turkot.
Aye.
Anderson, Crane, aye, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.